We'll order this October 11th emergency meeting of the Ellsworth City Council. All councilor members are present. The first item we have is to discuss the significant washout that we experienced and just get an update on that and if there's any action that the council needs to take.
Yeah, so thank you Chair Hamilton. So yeah, as you all know, Bayside Road currently is one lane and we had a significant culvert washout which happened as a partially result of the storm we had the other night. Adam and I have been in contact multiple times about it. We met several times today about it. Initially, the thought process was that we were, well initially, we couldn't get a six-foot culvert, which is what is in that current location. There's not one anywhere available. So then the conversation turned to what alternatives do we have? Adam reached out to Andrew McCullough, who was gracious enough to consult on the issue, decided that our best option was to put in two five-foot culverts to replace the six-foot culvert. And then two five-foot culverts were identified and located. It was going to be in excess of $30,000 to get the two culverts and that didn't include anything else. That was just the purchasing of the culverts. Adam, and he can certainly come to the podium and provide more detail because he's the one who's been doing a lot of diligence on this whole issue. Did reach out to DOT multiple times, initially thinking that it was perhaps their responsibility. There's still some, still some question as to whose exact responsibility it is to do this repair, whether it's ours or DOT. But the long and short of it is through his conversations with DOT, he discovered that they intend to come through and in 2026, replace that culvert with a box culvert, which is an extensive project that's costs, yeah, probably $500,000 to do. So then Adam and, so once Adam brought this information to me, our conversation turned from, do we want to spend 65 to 75,000 dollars currently replacing the six-foot culvert with two five-foot culverts? Or is there some or other more temporary repair that we can do that's much more cost-effective for the city, under the circumstances of the DOT planning to replace that culvert anyway? So Adam and I talked about it, Adam, and we talked about using these existing culvert in some way, shape, or fashion, increasing the amount of erosion control around the culvert to prevent, you know, a future washout. We talked a lot about the fact that the culvert that's existing has been in there without any sort of issue for longer than either one of us can remember. So ultimately, what we settled on and what Adam took back to Andrew and they discussed is a plan to replace or insert a five-foot culvert, 20-foot section of five-foot culvert into the existing six-foot culvert and then pack the area, compact it, do the increased erosion control around the opening of the culvert, pour concrete at the seam with the culverts, correct?
Load the bank with riprap.
Load the bank with riprap and essentially do a temporary, you know, a temporary repair of sorts. He reviewed this plan with Andrew and although it is somewhat of a calculated risk, I mean there is a potential for a failure with, you know, with the culvert. We feel that this is the most economic, economically responsible decision to make at this point under the circumstances of DOT coming through and doing a full culvert replacement in the very near future. If that were not the case, then I think we would be having a different conversation as to what the long-term fix is. But I think under the circumstances, this is the way to go. And just rough estimates that Adam and I talked about is, you know, this repair can be done somewhere in the 10 to 15,000 dollar range, using our equipment, our staff, and actually the DOT is loaning us the culvert. So we won't have any money in purchasing of the piece of culvert that's needed to insert into the current culvert.
Because they're going to take it back? They'll just take it back?
They could.
They could if they wanted it in two years, I guess, when they come do the box culvert, but.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
It's not their culvert to replace. Why are they replacing it in two years?
We had that very same question.
It's their culvert. It's part of the urban, the only reason we have that is the urban compact. That's their culvert and it's their washout.
The argument was made, so it's in, it's within the urban compact. The urban compact obligates us to maintenance. This goes far and above maintenance.
Exactly. This is a capital project.
So, which again, and we're not entirely, and Adam can certainly come and speak more to it because he's the one that's been dealing directly with the DOT, but we're not entirely out of the game of the DOT moving up that timeframe to do that repair. But the fact of the matter is, is right now, we have that road one lane. DOT is not accepting responsibility, not coming down here anytime in the immediate future to make that repair. So this is, again, the most economical way that we can come up with to get that road back open to two lanes and do it in a timely fashion. We can have this project completed by the end of next week-ish, if all, you know, if all goes well. So again, it's a temporary repair, not a long-term repair, but I think it's the most economical way for us to get that road back open as quickly as possible while we continue to work with DOT, hopefully to either A, move that project up, the box culvert project up into, you know, a more reasonable timeframe, or accept, you know, and therefore accept full responsibility to repair that to the, you know, to the extent that it needs repair. But if we want to get that road open to two lanes, this is the only way we're going to be able to do it in a timely manner.
I agree. I mean, the people can't keep going like that, but I do personally think that the state of Maine and the DOT should be held accountable for that road. That's, I mean, that's all part of, the agreements that we've had with them and the way it became an urban compact, that was, you know, a known item that they were paying for capital improvements. And losing half a road into the stream is not maintenance. They know that.
Nope.
They're just making up taxpayers.
Is there some way, some kind of pressure to put on them that's, that you know about? That's different from what we're doing?
Other than you just.
Other than just be mad and go along?
Going up in the, going up, but I think you've already gone up the chain quite a bit rather than just your district person, but.
Yeah, oh yeah.
I mean, someone's, that's just, you look at the picture, that's a capital project that is not maintenance.
Yeah.
It's just a shame that they're trying to put that onto the city of Ellsworth taxpayers. It's their responsibility.
Probably a pretty good chance that the county or somebody would get money because of that storm. I mean, it damaged a lot of properties and.
We have been in touch with Andy Sankey and we will keep track of everything, but the threshold for that, for that funding from the federal government in the event of a, you know, catastrophe type of storm-related crimes is like four or $500,000. And at least at this point, it doesn't appear as though there's that, that level of damage throughout the county. But we have been in contact with Andy Sankey and we will continue to monitor that. We will provide him with the figures of what it costs all-in for the repair. Not only the repair, but the time that was spent the day of the storm doing that repair. And certainly if the county meets that threshold, then, you know, we would certainly be eligible to.
I looked down at the mountain, it looked like there was a bomb and strike went on down there. I was like, oh my God. And just that road, that culvert, there's like 25 other places in the state that washed out.
Oh, I'm sure.
And brand-new culverts that were put in a year or two ago that washed out. So it's just happened, I mean.
Adam, do you have anything else to add on that?
The only thing I would like to say is don't go with this measure. That road will not be two lanes this winter. The box culvert, the state did say they would do an MPI on it and we could do it immediately, but it's a long process to get a box culvert made for that.
But we shouldn't do an MPI on their roads. I'm sorry, I know I'm being, but that just, that just, you know, that's just not taking their responsibility.
Right.
Obviously, that was a button.
And I do, I do, just real quick, I do want to commend Adam for, because, you know, he's been, since it happened, he's been very communicative, obviously, but also he's been, you know, turning over every stone, try to make sure that he finds the most economical and efficient way to get this taken care of. And he had, I mean, he's been on the phone with multiple different DOT people, you know, trying to, one, first and foremost, get them to take responsibility. But when that was clearly not working, he, you know, he turned to, well, what's our next option? And, you know, getting them to give us, loan us a culvert so we don't have to make that initial capital investment and, and all of the other effort that he's put into this is really what's, you know, come up with a solution that I think is going to be a relatively inexpensive way to get that road back open to two lanes, so.
Do we need any sort of motion tonight to approve any sort of funding on it?
No. Unfortunately, it would, it would even be less expensive. Unfortunately, we have to extend our lease on the, rental on the excavator. That was actually up on Friday, so we'll have to extend that.
Right.
Which is where the majority of the cost, the cost to the project comes from, because with the culvert being free, the rest is just labor and then some, some concrete, which my friend over here will get for us. And then, and then just the labor and the paving, but, so the costs are relatively small outside of the excavator rental, so.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Even with the small costs, can we submit them for reimbursement?
Yes. Yeah, we will, we will keep track of all of it and, you know, if DOT were to come back in two weeks and say, oh yeah, we accept responsibility, then we'll try to, you know, recover any costs from DOT. And then certainly, if there's a declaration put forward for the storm damage, then we'll be in line with our handout for that as well.
Are there other culverts that were put in around the same time? Or others that were scheduled for repair or maintenance by DOT in the next few years that we should be looking at?
There's nothing on their radar. They have one other one that they did not share with me where it was, but they have one other culvert besides that one that they're going to take responsibility for.
But they, they won't tell you where it is?
They have not yet.
Since it's undisclosed.
It's a secret culvert.
Darren here is in Washington DC right now, so that's why part of the problem with the communication is so hard.
It's going to be a contest.
Find the culvert.
Well, thank you, Adam. All right. And any other questions, comments about that item? All right, we'll move into item two, manager Moser, you do not need to stick around for this.
I will exit.
So item two deals falls under chapter 40 of the Code of Ethics Conduct, specifically section 12. It is, so I want to be clear, this is a council matter that we will be discussing, the council will be discussing. The decision in terms of the issue that we're bringing forward concerns Council Halloran. Council Halloran has the right to, initially, it was going to be an executive session. He has the right to request that we hold it in public session. He has chosen to have it in public session and I'm assuming that's still your wishes?
Absolutely.
So, so it is in public session. What I want to say to everybody that is here is that it is a public session, but it is not a public hearing. Therefore, there will be no public comments allowed. There will be no comments made during our deliberation and our conversations and there will be no disruptions. And if that happens, you will be asked to leave the chamber. So please respect our rules as we go through this process. So with that said, the last comment I'll make is that what brings us here is the result of information that was disclosed by Council Halloran to the media that was concerning. The nature of the information that was shared with the council is not to be discussed, the content. Neither are names of any employees, city employees. That should, shall also be discussed. If, if that happens, I will intervene immediately and ask you to not use the names of city employees. It is not necessary, it's not relevant to this discussion. So with that, I am going to turn this over to the attorney for the city of Ellsworth, Mr. Hamer, who will present the, the information. Council Halloran.
My attorney had a question.
Will you entertain a point of order? Will Councilor O'Halloran be permitted to present evidence on his behalf?
He will be able to discuss just the issue at hand. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, via assistance of counsel.
Yes, counsel, yeah, he's a loud representation, that's why you're here. You can, he can speak, you can intervene, he can consult with you, you can speak on his behalf, however you want to work that out, that's permissible. You're not the general public.
All right. Second question, I think there's a recording system. Is it currently operational? Is it recording this meeting?
It should be, it's.
Great.
Okay, good evening. My name's John Hamer. Here not to, I'm here to, to give you some advice, but the decision is ultimately yours. This matter arose, the question that's going to be before you is whether Councilor O'Halloran violated the city's code of conduct, excuse me, by disposing confidential documents to the public. This is a matter that arose and you all, there was an email that was sent regarding the conduct of two city employees, went to the whole council, so I presume everyone has seen that email. Has anyone not seen that email? All right.
Would it be appropriate to submit that email for the record?
No, no, because of the confidential nature of the email.
So let me, let me intervene. So this is a council process. This is a council discussion, we're following the rules of, of the council. This is not a court, this is not a hearing. This is, if you want to refer to chapter 40, it outlines what this process entails. We are not going to disclose individual names, we're not going to disclose the, the content of that email for the very reason that we are here this evening. This evening is about the disclosure of that, which is concerning in terms of potential violations of law. So that will not be disclosed.
Will you entertain a point of law, Mr. Hamer?
This is not a, this is not a.
That's subject to rule ADB review.
You will have your opportunity to address the council when I finish, so you will have plenty of time. So this email was sent to the council regarding the conduct of two city employees and there was nothing wrong with that. Councilor O'Halloran responded to this email and sent a message to the city council and the employees involved, which was fine. The problem arose is the fact that the email had copied on it the Bangor Daily News and the Ellsworth American Newspaper. Now, the email that had been sent complained about the conduct of a couple of employees and there was no investigation, there was, it was a response that was quick and off the cuff, which was, which again, was fine, had it not been for the fact that Ms. Councilor O'Halloran had copied the media on the response. Municipal records that pertain to an employee's performance or complaints about that employee are confidential under, under title 30A, section 70, 2702. And that's what, that's what the problem is, is that by forwarding the email and including the original complaint, the complaint was disclosed to the public when it should have been kept confidential. I can tell you the exact specific language of the section if you'd like, but it, that's the essence of what the, what the statute says, that if you've got a complaint, the complaint is kept quiet, is kept quiet, is kept confidential. And only if there is final disciplinary action as a result of that complaint is anything made public. The final disciplinary action would become a public record at that point. But all of the complaints, all of the investigation and all the records leading up to that point would remain confidential. And the, the point of the statute really is to protect employees from frivolous complaints and from having the process put out unnecessarily that could harm reputations and, and interfere with their ability to perform their jobs. So this was no, there was no investigation, there was no final discipline, it was just an email that forwarded the complaint along with, with Councilor Halloran's response. Section seven of the city code of conduct provides that city officials should not, without proper legal authorization, disclose confidential concerning property, government affairs of the city and so forth. So by allegedly violating section 2702, Councilor O'Halloran allegedly violated section seven of the code of conduct as well. There are provisions that do allow for the council to discuss the performance of employees, but as you may know, that has to be done in executive session unless the employee involved consents to having it in public session as we're doing here today. So there's ability to have a discussion about complaints, but again, that's required to maintain in a confidential fashion. So the question for you to consider is, you've all seen the email, was the email confidential and should have been kept confidential under the statute and under the code of conduct? And if so, what do you want to do about it? The code of conduct does authorize the council to issue oral reprimands, written reprimands and formal sanctions. That's in an order of severity for violation of the rules, but that's up to you if you find there's a violation. You can, you can choose one of those if you like. Any questions? I mean, it's, seems like a pretty straightforward situation. I'm sure that Attorney Baber will find some caveats and wish to discuss it in more detail, but that's the basic situation. The facts really aren't in dispute, it's really a question of interpretation of law at this point. All right, well, if there's no questions, I'm happy to answer questions should they come up and I and Attorney Baber, Baber, would you like to come up?
And while he's coming, going to the podium, I just want to also stress because of the process, to make sure that the full council is aware of this. The process that we're going through following this, it starts with the attempt to try to informally resolve this, the concern. I attempted to do that on behalf of the council. I reached out to Councilor O'Halloran on 9/21 with an email at 3:56 PM. He read it at 3:59 PM. I asked him to please give me a call. I stated the reason that I wanted to discuss with him. I told him I have given until the end of the day, the next day, later in the day, but if I didn't hear back from him, I would assume that he was not interested in having the discussion. He did not contact me and that's when I moved forward to schedule this meeting. So I just wanted everybody to understand that the process was followed in terms of how it's spelled out in chapter 40. And that's why, why we're here this evening, because there was no attempt by Councilor O'Halloran to have that conversation.
Councilor, for the record, my name is Brett Baber, I'm the attorney of Lanan Blackwell and Baber in Bangor. Councilor O'Halloran, would you care to address Chair Hamilton's last comment that you did not respond to his invitation to contact you, to contact him?
I'd be glad to. I did receive an email asking me to phone him and I chose not to phone him. I felt that his phone could be dialing me as well as I could dial him and I would like to have a recorded conversation, not an unrecorded conversation.
Fair enough. By way of overview, again, there is no dispute as to the content of the email or who it was sent to. I would respectfully disagree with city councils, the city attorneys' comments that it does not violate, that the personal records statute is in play at all. There is a specific definition of what municipal records are confidential under the personal records statute. And there are two types that might even arguably be in play. Number one is municipal records pertaining to an identifiable employee and containing one of the following, performance evaluations that are submitted in confidence. Well, Councilor O'Halloran did not submit it in confidence, nor was it a performance evaluation. The one that Mr. Hamer alludes to specifies complaints, charges, or accusations of misconduct, replies to those complaints, charges, or accusations, and any other information or materials that may result in disciplinary action. There was nothing in Councilor O'Halloran's email that was a formal charge or accusation. He was merely responding to another employee, I should say, a former employee who was resigning from employment due to some ongoing difficulties that appear to be occurring within the city administration here. And nor did Councilor O'Halloran suggest that he was seeking any disciplinary action against the individual involved whatsoever. So as a matter of law, it doesn't fit those boxes within the personal records statute. And that's one reason I mentioned, there may be an ADB appeal of this regardless of the outcome, because this is a legal issue that's never really been addressed by the main Supreme Judicial Court, any other court of law, so you're, but I would submit that it doesn't fit this definition of what a confidential personnel record is. Second, and I will ask Councilor O'Halloran some questions to create a record for later review, as is his right by statute. He has a First Amendment right, as all of you do, to comment on matters of public concern. And he had a firm belief that this was a matter of public concern, thus any attempt to sanction him would be a violation of his First Amendment rights. That is of utmost concern to Councilor O'Halloran. And I will lay a foundation for that. Third.
Let me ask, let me ask you a question, just so I understand what you're implying. Are you saying that a counselor is not obligated to follow the rules of the council and the oath of office to defer to, under the freedom of speech?
I think your rules have to defer statutes, statutes, this statute that we're talking about has to give way to any First Amendment rights. So there's a First Amendment right to, it has to be a matter of public concern. That's sort of the bright line for members of the city government.
But that's, that's not my question. My question is that, do you.
Yes.
Do you believe that a council member has to uphold the oath that they take and that the rights of the municipality to develop those rules, that once you accept that responsibility and oath, that you're obligated to follow that?
First and foremost in that oath is to follow the Constitution, I would think. So every counselor is obligated to follow the Constitution and any laws, ordinances, oaths that are inconsistent with the US Constitution are unconstitutional per se. I think that answers your question.
Well, I think you're stretching it, but.
Well, feel free to disagree at your peril.
You know, Counselor, I would ask you to, this is not a courtroom and you may.
I'm just trying to make a legal point, so you're on notice.
Counselor.
That the First Amendment rights of Mr. O'Halloran are to be honored and protected.
We can end this meeting, but Counselor.
You can do so.
Counselor, I am asking you just to address us respectfully. I'm asking you questions.
I was.
And so I don't need you to, we can have a civil conversation, that's what this council is here to do.
I was.
If you are here to represent Councilor O'Halloran, you may do so, but you need to follow our parameters in terms of having a respectful conversation. And if you're not going to do that, I will continue to ask you to do that. Thank you.
I think I was, Chairman. So that's point two. Number three is I have an understanding that the employee that, the former employee that Councilor O'Halloran was responding to has filed a complaint with the Maine Human Rights Commission. And by reaching out to her and the, and the media, Councilor O'Halloran is protected under the Maine Human Rights Statute as somebody that is opposing a violation of the Maine Human Rights Act. This particular, these particular allegations of discrimination that are now before the Maine Human Rights Commission. So these are legal issues that you will have to contend with whether you do so tonight or not, depending on the action. But getting back to Councilor O'Halloran's First Amendment rights, I have a few questions for Councilor O'Halloran by way of explanation as to why he went public via the media for this particular email. So Councilor O'Halloran, when were you elected to the city council?
November of '21.
And what has been your general philosophy as to the sharing of information with the media and the public about municipal affairs and governance?
Glass walls at city hall.
Why do you say glass walls at city hall?
I think that the people that are paying the bills here, Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth, have a right to know everything that their money is being spent on.
Have you had difficulties? Have you had difficulties presenting matters of public concern internally through internal processes during your tenure?
I have.
And what changes have you adopted as a result of those difficulties?
There's been many. One was I had to take to the public podium to get my point across. Secondly, I was shut down from that. So at that point, I started copying the media on issues.
Have you ever received any training as to when you can go to the media or not go to the media?
I have not.
Have you actually received any training on what the Code of Conduct entails in terms of confidential records?
I have not.
In your opinion, as a member of the city council, why is the working relationship between municipal leaders and the city staff a matter of public concern that everyone, everybody in the city of Ellsworth should know about?
I believe everyone that's paying the bills here should know what's going on here, and the only way to get that message out is the media.
All right. And what happens to the ability of the city staff to do their jobs if there is a serious difficulty within the working relationship in the City Hall?
You can't do your job if you don't have proper work environments.
And how does that affect the public?
It affects them every day. The constant turnover at City Hall, the absenteeism, the inter-fighting that goes on at City Hall.
And have you experienced...
I'm going to intervene for a second, and I just need to focus in terms of what the reason we're here, and I need to understand, we are talking about the disclosure of the information, and the council has to have this discussion. And so the opinions about, Counselor O'Halloran's opinions about other aspects of the city is not at issue here this evening. The issue is specifically concerning the sharing of that information to the media. That's what we need to focus on. The other information is not relevant for this discussion. So if we can keep it focused on that topic, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I was just about finished, in any event, but I would respectfully submit that the reason he submitted it is at the core of why he sent it to the media, and again, I would submit that's protected by the First Amendment, and I will close with that. Thank you.
I'll just be very brief to follow up. The problem was that Counselor O'Halloran forwarded a complaint. His reply is neither here nor there, but the complaint is clearly protected by Title 38, Section 27-02. It was a complaint alleging that city employees behaved in an inappropriate fashion, and that is clearly within the scope of Section 27-02. So that was the first problem, and that's frankly the primary problem. There are certain things that are required by statute to be kept confidential. There's a lot of stuff that can be broadcast to the media, and that's fine. This is one of those situations where the email needed to be kept confidential regardless of any desire to keep the public informed. You know, that's a laudable intent, but the employees of the city do have rights as well, and doing something that will, sending an email to the media that concerns them, which is otherwise confidential, or supposed to be confidential, is not the way to go about promoting the city. This is not a First Amendment issue. This is clearly a statutory issue about the complaint that was filed. And the Maine Human Rights Commission proceeding, we have no knowledge of that as far as I am aware, and it has nothing to do with this, the matter that's before you right now. So, once again, I do think it's a very simple issue and a very simple factual situation. Was the email protected by confidentiality by statute? And I believe that it was. That's your decision to make, though, and if so, then what do you do about it? And if Counselor O'Halloran was unaware of it, being confidential, now that's something to consider as well. But hopefully, the commission, the council here will be able to sort through that.
Could you clarify something for us?
Yes.
Having trouble reconciling the fact that it was from a former employee, does this mean anything different? Where's the differentiation between when does a former employee become the public with an opinion versus this is an internal complaint? Is there a differentiation?
No, there is no difference. Any complaint that's received about a city employee is confidential, and only if final disciplinary action is issued is anything become public, and that's the final discipline, not the complaint, not the investigation, just the final discipline. And that ensures that the complaint can be investigated properly, and while it's happening, there's not information floating around about an employee that's not correct. That's why you have an investigation, to make sure that whatever is done, it's with due process requirements for the employees.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Open up to the council in terms of questions, comments. I would be interested, Counselor O'Halloran, hearing from you in terms of, we've heard from your attorney, the issue and the concern is that the due process and the fairness for city employees to have an accusation about them, to have that addressed, to be looked in, to be given the same rights that you've been given this evening, wasn't there. And so I guess I want to hear from you, if you're willing to share, just in terms of your thought process around that and your perspective after hearing the city attorney speak. What are your thoughts about that?
I have a lot of thoughts about it, but I'm not sure you'd like to hear them.
I just don't hear them.
I think we're here because I don't vote along to get along, and if you want to pick apart the code of ethics, we can have a field day with that, with everybody sitting at this table. I simply responded to a former employee. I didn't viciously violate anything. I responded to a former employee, and I copied the media. Glass walls at City Hall. Did I know it was going to cause this big hurrah? Absolutely not. Didn't intend for it to cause a big hurrah. I intended to create a transparency of what goes on at City Hall. Oh, to further that, I've received three of these since I've been on the council, excuse me, in the last year, I've received three of these complaints that have similar facts to them, and nothing's been done, so I copied the media. Did I viciously violate anything? Absolutely not. If you want to pick apart the code of ethics, we can pick apart that on everybody.
So you didn't reach out to me to talk about this issue, to try to resolve it?
Wasn't you on the email?
Excuse me?
Wasn't you on the email?
When I asked you to respond?
Absolutely not. You asked me to call you. I'm not calling you. You've got phone numbers. You can dial your phone just like I can. Why is that my job? If you want to talk to me, dial the phone.
That answers my question. This is not just my issue, so I don't want to make it my issue. This is for the full council to talk about. I think that your response in terms of, did you intend to do it? You, in one breath, you say no, but in the other, you're not accepting responsibility for it, and I'm concerned about the message that sends to employees of the city in terms of, we have a responsibility to protect the rights of city employees. They're not, they're not part of this council. They're not elected. They're doing their jobs, and they have a right to due process and a fair process with their employment. And I think that by including the media, that's really an overstep and is something that the employees should know, that this is a serious matter. It's a serious issue and that the council takes it seriously. That's all. For me, that's the message that should be there, and that's what I'm trying to convey. And if we can communicate that as a council, that's really the message that I think needs to be communicated, is that we understand that they have rights as employees so that this does not happen in the future. And I think that's a reasonable place for us to be, given the situation.
Counselor Chair, I want to ask one follow-up question. You mentioned that nothing had been done on behalf of the three employees that had raised issues. Were you aware of any formal investigations that were undertaken on behalf of any of those three former employees?
None.
Thank you.
So I would just add to that in terms of what we don't know is, were those complaints forwarded for, within the city's process with employees in terms of filing complaints? We have no idea whether that information was shared and the process was followed. The fact that a council received information doesn't mean that it rose to the level of a complaint. So I want to be careful that we don't just make assumptions with this.
Well, and just to that point, there was, there was one complaint that we did have a meeting in an executive session about, so I don't think, I don't think zero things have been followed up on.
What would constitute an investigation? They look into it? Did it happen? Or, I mean, what are you thinking that they have to like, have the Attorney General come? I don't know what you want for an investigation. They do it in-house, figure out if they feel that there was any wrongdoing or not.
Well, I think that gets at the due process, too, the fairness piece for employees, that there's a process that's followed. It's not the council's role to oversee employees.
Right.
That's not our responsibility.
Is there a general, just a general statement of what the job of a counselor is? I mean, because I think we've gone way past that in the last couple of years with a lot of frivolous stuff that we probably shouldn't even be involved in.
So going to my last point, I'll just say this. Counselor O'Halloran, if you are willing to say, acknowledge that the employees have rights to their privacy around employment issues and confidentiality, and that you understand that now and that will not happen in the future, for me, that gets at the messaging, and for me, I would not really require any further action. So I guess that's the question to you. Are you willing to acknowledge that and accept that?
I certainly didn't do anything to violate anybody or anything. I made a truthful statement as I know it. Certainly, I don't want to cause anybody any harm, but I think that what I did was an effort to notify the media that this has happened three times in a year. Maybe I should consult with you and clear those actions before I communicate with anybody. Maybe that's a fair assumption, because I certainly didn't mean to cause anybody any harm except state the truth and state the truth to the public, to Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth. That was my intent. And like I said before, there is several violations in this Code of Conduct that is everywhere, and we're talking about the one that I have done, not others that have happened. So certainly, do I want to repeat this process? Absolutely not. Maybe you should discontinue my email so that can't happen. I'd be willing to do that.
I've known you a long time, and you're not a malicious person, and I know you're not. I think that this is something that you did for what you think are good reasons, and I truly believe that. But the problem is, you talk about glass walls. People at the city that work for the city call it a fishbowl, because everything you do is watched. Every person that walks in, every article in the newspaper, everything that happens on the television, everything they do is watched, right down to the way they make one comment. God forbid they should have a bad day. I mean, because that's, that can be turned into a huge thing. And that's why we call it the fishbowl, because you're being watched, but everything that's being seen and listened to and is distorted by that person's belief. So I strongly feel that there are glass walls. Unfortunately, I don't think they're clear glass all the time. And so how would, you know, being an employee at the city of Ellsworth or any municipality whatsoever, they are an employee, and they deserve the respect for their bosses just like any employee that you have. And every single thing that they do does not need to go to the press until it is investigated, and employees are overseen by charter, by the manager. The council is the employer of the manager, and that's who we watch over. So if there's a problem with the manager, then we go to executive session and we talk, and we make sure that those things are taken care of. If we have issues with the employees and we go to the manager, we make sure that it's taken care of and give them their due process and give them their ability to be protected against all those people that are watching every single step that they make. There are people in the city that we all know that this city can't make a right step. They cannot make a correct step. And then there are the people that love the people that work in the city, and you hear about it a lot, a lot more than you hear the missteps. But unfortunately, that's it. And that's why, that's why we go through certain channels, we make sure that people are respected, and we take care of these issues as they come, instead of every single thing going out there. If we have, and by the way, I've been on this council a year, and I have not seen any Code of Ethics breaks, but I don't know what happened before I was on here. But that's why we take care of them. That's why we make sure you take care of the issues, you absolutely listen to the complaints, and you investigate them. But you don't go and put it all public until we know that there really and truly is a problem, because it can be distorted by a person's feelings.
Again.
And I agree. I know...
Get rid of my email.
No, no.
That's simple.
I'm just trying to explain, Steve.
Just simple. I understand what you're saying.
You have a link to your email.
I'm saying, let's insulate everybody by just getting rid of my email.
You know, that's not necessary. I think that you have, you have good intentions, Steve. You were a good person, and you're doing what you think is best.
I'm just telling you that that would secure everybody.
Or you're just thinking about the respect of the employees.
That that wouldn't happen. Just eliminate my email. That way, we don't have this conversation. That way, I know that I can't share an email with anybody. Just get rid of it. That would be something.
I give up. I tried.
I think that's the answer. Eliminate it.
And how are you going to know about stuff that's going on in the city?
I don't know. There's a lot that goes on in the city I don't know now.
Oh, well, that's not...
Yes, it is.
Didn't, weren't you offered the election officials workshop?
Absolutely. I've participated in that.
And you have had training.
I have participated in that. Right. I think that's just the solution. Just get rid of it.
Just don't, just don't look at it. That's... That's...
So what do we do?
Well, so, part of the process is that bringing an issue like this is the right of the council to do, to hold it in executive session. The individual can have it in public like we're doing. The discussion goes forward in terms of laying the issue out, having the discussion, and then the council can decide to do nothing, to take action, including what our attorney laid out. And so, it's up now to the council, if we're done the discussion, to decide if there's any formal action that we feel like we should take as a result of this discussion.
I personally don't want to take any action. I think that this is a first, this is an issue, I think, lesson learned, I'm hoping lesson learned, and we've had the discussion, and, you know, let's just move on.
I agree.
I don't know what to do. I mean, it's like, three times now, we've had lawyers involved in a city council matter. And to me, it seems, I don't know, like somebody's looking for a big fight and I just don't get it. If you come to do the, get elected to do the job of a city council, you should expect to know somewhat, or learn what a city council's job is. And I don't think that trying to take down the city is part of it.
I agree with Michelle. I worry that action won't necessarily help anything, that will just escalate. And I think the education that we've gotten from our lawyer is helpful, looking at the statute is helpful, reminding us all about privacy issues for the city staff is important. And I think this meeting has accomplished that task. So I think it's okay to just move forward without action.
Could we have another training session? Because there are three new council, and if, you know, if we have two new counselors as well, I think it would be a good opportunity to have another training, just to remind us and...
Yeah, and Mr. Hamer did that the first year that we both came on. And I think that was really helpful. After the new election, we talked about freedom of information and I think talking about how to communicate with people outside City Hall would be worthwhile.
I think it should be a minimum of, should at least acknowledge what was done wrong and it's not going to happen again. I don't think that's too much to ask. Then next month, we're not here doing the same thing again, and a month after, and a month after. Learn from it, learn a lesson.
Gene, I would uncouple previous issues from this one. Councillors have the right to bring a suit, et cetera. It's very different from a ethics violation, right?
But I don't believe this is the first ethical violation. There are things that are outlined in the city councils that we're supposed to do and things that we're not supposed to do. I'm as rough as anybody and I know enough not to do certain things. I think we all do. I'll just add, saying, it's not even a big deal. Just acknowledge, while I did something wrong, I take responsibility. I won't let it happen again. To know that you at least care about not let it happen again.
I would just, I think the, the comment about escalating it, it's certainly not the intent. And for me anyways, it's a matter of, I think, going back to what I said earlier, it's a serious matter for those employees and that we have a responsibility to, if we didn't bring this issue forward to discuss, that we would be negligent in not protecting that and raising this issue. I think there's a level of that councillors have around personal responsibility. So this whole, I'll be off the council in just a few weeks, there'll be somebody in the role of the chair. Like it or not, the role of the chair has responsibility, when things come up, to be the intermediary and raise issues. The personal responsibility in terms of whether you like somebody or not, personality or not, there's a personal responsibility in terms of having conversations and being respectful around that. That's on the individual who doesn't follow up. That's not on somebody else's responsibility. And so, with that being the case, to try to informally resolve this just obviously was not the intent. So, being here tonight, more than anything, I hope it sends a clear message to city employees that any member of the council here or in the future respects their position, respects the employment law, will hold their rights to due process the same that we hold ourselves to the rights to due process. I mean, that's the message that more, that's really important for me to convey, that we take that serious and that this discussion should show city employees that we do take that serious. Individual responsibilities, that will play out going forward. And if at such time, something else emerges, that will be up to the council to decide what action to take. But I personally, I can, I can agree with the fact of no action, because I think just having this conversation speaks volumes in terms of where we sit as a, as a council as a whole. Councilor Howland?
You mentioned due process, and I just want to open this door. We've had three employees in a year that have had some similar traits and similar conversations with this council, sending emails to us. And it seems that there's been nothing done. And the person that has been complained about has erupted at me twice.
So we're going to stop that part. We're not going to get into those types of discussions.
Let me finish.
Well, I want to just caution you, like I said from the very beginning of this meeting, we're not going to identify individuals by name, title. It's too small of a staff to do that, so...
I am not going to identify them. I said, the individual. I'm not saying who the individual is. I'm saying the individual. And what I'm saying is this, is we've had three former employees complain. I have had a personal eruption of temper twice from that employee. So, from this, we talk about due process. Can there be an investigation into this, instead of nothing going on?
So what I would say to that, and I think the council alluded to this earlier, as a counselor, if you have concerns that you feel need to be addressed based on knowledge you have, you can request an executive session and we can have that conversation in that forum to determine what, if anything, needs to take place. That's the forum for that type of discussion. And you are more than willing, more than able to request that. That's where that takes place. And so that's what I would suggest you doing. That's the proper channel. That's the due process. It airs the concerns that you have and it starts a process in terms of whatever that investigation entails, that's where it would happen. That's the appropriate forum for us as a council to pursue. And that's where, what I would suggest you do.
Thank you. And I thank you for that guidance. However, I'm against executive sessions, so I will not process that request, because I think the people of Ellsworth ought to know everything that goes on at City Hall. They're paying the bills. But thank you.
And so I will defer to the city attorney, just to clarify, to make sure that I'm 100% accurate in terms of, because we want to make sure that if there's a concern that needs to be investigated, that there's a proper way to do that. So if you could just make sure that it's not just me speaking, that it comes from...
If the council has a concern about a particular employee and wants to have an executive session to discuss that employee or any complaints about that employee, you can do that. That is the right under section 405 of Title I. But that is the form for doing it. It's, it has to be done in an executive session, if the council's going to speak about it. If the council isn't going to speak about it and the chair wants to direct that there be an investigation conducted, then the chair, I think, can do that. And then, an investigation can be done and then shared with the council. But again, those results would have to be in executive session. And only if final discipline is issued as a result of the investigation, would the final discipline be a public record. The investigation itself remain confidential under law. So, I mean, there's a way to go about doing an investigation. There are some firms that, I mean, sometimes attorneys do it, sometimes you get a third-party investigator to come in and do an investigation. But the results really are confidential. And that's the essence of section 2702, is that until final discipline's taken, complaints, investigations are confidential. So as a body, the only way you can discuss it is in executive session. So I think I've said that enough.
Thank you.
Councilor Howland. I've seen a lot of these same emails. I've heard direct complaints from staff and former staff. And I've been also frustrated by them and frustrated by sometimes the council moving slow to address them, the city moving slowly to address them. And I think that you came from a place of wanting to address these issues and wanting to protect the staff by making this a better place to work. And obviously, free speech is incredibly important. But there are caveats there. There's, you know, HIPAA protects medical information, slander laws, hate speech, et cetera. I mean, I'm just sort of thinking hypothetically, what if this person who sent the email did not want to be branded a whistleblower at a next job? What if, what if some of the information wasn't true and now we've got slander out there? There's just reasons that we want to keep the information in executive session or between the council until it's investigated for those reasons. So I've just been chewing on this for a while, you know, since we have this executive session on the books, because seeing that email, one of my first thoughts was frustration as well, and what should we do about this? Should we tell about this? So I'm, you know, I don't, I think you came from the right place, but thinking further and deeper about it, I have come to realize the reasons why this information needs to be kept close until investigations are done, until things are verified, et cetera.
I don't, I guess to state that in the same light, if you will, certainly, I did not intend to cause all of this, like I said before. And I'm happy to be accountable going forward, because I just want my email shut down, so this can't happen again. And I think that's the best assurance that I can give the public, is to shut down.
Mr. Baber?
I think with some discussion between legal counsel and Councilor Howland about the concerns we've heard from the council, that we can proceed in the correct direction and address some Councilor Howland systematic concerns in the proper forum that you want to pursue.
I'm not sure what that meant.
Yeah.
Sorry. What did you mean by that?
He'll do an executive session, but he will present his complaints, but we will do it internally.
Oh, thank you.
Would that, I mean, would that work? You've said you don't want executive sessions, but if the only way to safely address these issues is an executive session?
Let me, yeah, let me speak to that. I'm not asking for any law change. I just don't like executive sessions. And I vote against them, because I think there's too much that goes on in executive sessions. And I don't like the perception that the public has to wonder what goes on. That's why I won't ask to go into an executive session. And it's just something I'm not comfortable doing. I won't ask to go into an executive session anymore.
So, just understanding, just to clarify, so, understanding from your attorney, the council can't take action unless there's a formal process in terms of that's initiated by somebody on the council to say, this is a concern and we need to do X. And so, unless that follows a certain procedure, it doesn't get resolved. And you're saying that you have a way for that to happen, to bring the concerns and follow the correct process, so that comes to light and we can move the issue forward in a proper way? Any other comments? Councilor Howland, you want to say anything? Do you feel like you've had the chance to say everything that you want to say?
Maybe I haven't said everything that people want me to say, but I think, I think the insurance that this doesn't happen again, again, isolate the...
Is your attorney comfortable that you've had the chance to say everything?
I'll have to talk with him about...
Well, I want, before we adjourn, I want to make sure...
I think the work is sufficient. Thank you.
Motion.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?